So, so do you touch on the other ones?
Yes. So, the type of documents are simply statements from the state indicating that there is a need and a desire to put more funds into technical education. And the diagram that we gave you or the blueprint is just something that our drafting department put together as possible extension to the CTEI program the way we know it now. Because the state is saying they want more technical education and we would like to have more students involved in technical education, but we don't have the room. And so, in order to get funded for the MSBA, it's a process that has to be initiated by the local school committee. And we would just offer something like this for your consideration, so that if you perceive that it would be something worthwhile, then we can talk about it and perhaps get a couple more programs added to the 13 that we already have. So, I don't want to be long-winded in a nutshell, that's basically what it's all about.
It's true, you're hearing about it all across the city of O-Tech and the offerings. And we have people asking us, we have a unique conversation coming up which Dave and I will talk about after, there are people that do want to come into our O-Tech and want more opportunities and we send students out all the time because we don't offer certain programs. So, someday hopefully we can have the money to definitely expand because we have a great O-Tech offering. None of them?
If, you know, wishes can come true, what three shops would you add?
I think there's two in that bad addition right there. And right now, we're paying a lot of money to other districts for our students to go to cosmetology programs and early childhood education programs. And so, because we're bleeding, if you would, this would be a way to stop the bleeding and actually get more students to enroll with us.
I don't see it written here, Dave, in the office?
No, it's not. The names of the programs are not written, this is just a very elementary draft of what...
Right, but what would you consider, what, cosmetology is one?
Yes.
And early childhood, early childhood and...
No, there's only two. There's room for two.
But you could have a third.
If we could have a third, I would like to do something that has to do with taking care of the grounds. I think that there's a lot of employment out there upon graduation for students and I think our schools need some help. And if we could train our students and they have a place to practice right here at our own school in our own city, they would then be all set to go into a career upon graduation from our school.
Okay, I thought, one of, I thought a year ago you were considering a business, a core business.
Yes, well...
And I think that people aren't being trained on how to work in an office.
Yeah, yes. Well, our latest program is the Information Support Services and Networking Program, which is an IT program. That's what we're building right now and maybe that's the way we go in the future as far as business instead of the outside program. It doesn't matter to me. You know, I just want to see what's best for our students. And I would like to say one other thing. I think Lemnster is very, very unique. And it's unique because some of our students are on our electronics program, for example, are some of the brightest kids in the school and they get the opportunity to go to the regular high school and take AP courses. And if you're in a regional vocational technical school, you might not have that opportunity, but here you do. And then, in our Project Leadaway program, we have many, the majority of our students come from the high school that think they might like to get into engineering and they don't have any access to engineering classes unless they come to CTEI. So, our strength is in our diversity of sending technical students to the high school to take academics and high school students coming to the CTEI to get some career training. And that, I think that makes us pretty unique. And I think that's where our strength lies. So, that's...
Well, that would be very exciting and something that I think could garner a lot of exposure. Dave, could you give a little about the partnership with West Boyleson Schools and how that's going and how many were up there and any new ones?
This past year, I think we had 11 that came to Lemnster from West Boyleson. So far this year, I think we've gotten commitments from four more.
Six.
Six more?
Six.
Okay, so, so that puts us up to 17. And this is only the third year, so if we do one more year and say we average another five or six, we're going to be in the 20s, 22 maybe. And that's a lot of revenue for our city. And so, I, and, you know, it's an opportunity for our students too. And I know one of the concerns of the school committee has always been that, well, if we're taking all these students in, what about our own students? And I hear that. And again, another reason to expand, so we do have more room. The stories that I, I don't want to talk all night, but the stories that I could tell all of you about graduates, three or four years out of high school and they're earning $45,000, $50,000 a year, they bought land, they have a house, they land on state jobs and they're making $45 an hour. I mean, it's, it's heartwarming really, but I don't want to sound like, you know, we have all the answers because we don't. But the students right now that are applying themselves in the vocational technical areas are doing very well for themselves. And they don't have any loans after three or four years, they're loan free. And that's another good thing about it, so I just...
Very confident.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments over there? It's only that.
My only, my only, my only question is to piggyback on you, is the question they had, you named three, three sections. And you said there's more, there's a lot of kids born to come in. What section do you hear from people asking, do you have, who don't have? I know you already mentioned those three that you already mentioned, but are there some others that give you that, that thing you wake up in the middle and, I think, what the hell, why can't we do that? Besides those three that you already mentioned?
Well, just very quickly, this, we have the new information technology program. When we got that program, we also applied for a TV production, radio and TV production broadcast program. And state denied that from us because they said that the jobs that would be in the future for those graduates are too far away, people would have to take the train to go to Cambridge, go to work. And so, they denied us having that program at our school. See, in spite of the fact, we already have a TV studio, I mean, it would have been an easy, it would have been an easy thing for us to do, but they didn't allow it for us to do it. Instead, they approved of the IT program because the jobs available for IT workers are more spread out, they're not in one area. Everybody needs IT people these days. So, in spite of what we would like, whatever we go for, we have to convince the state that there are jobs available for these graduates when they graduate. So, that is to put into consideration when we say we'd like to try cosmetology and early childhood education.
Those are the only two that you haven't tried. Anything else, it's just...
I think Norm brought up a good one, a business, a business model.
Well, the business model, but, you know, those, those three that you talked about, but there's nothing else out there that makes you say, you know, your mouth gets watering.
Not right now, Ron.
No, you guys can laugh, because I have to...
No, I'm, I'm serious.
But is it because it costs too much? Is it labor intensive or is it ideologically intensive? What causes you to have the speed on saying that those are the only three things that we can have?
Well, I, I think the biggest thing is what I just said to you is that, you know, you have to have a job market to train these students, you know, for them to go to when they graduate. You know, an extreme example is you can't train a kid to be a blacksmith anymore because there's no jobs in blacksmithing. So, there are jobs though in cosmetology and there are plenty of jobs in early childhood education care. That's why we think that those are, and it might be a good way for us to help our own, our own school system as well. So, that's what we're thinking.
So, it's like self-interest, sustainability?
Yeah.
Dave, I hope that you will make a monumental effort to get that third electrical teacher back in.
No.
He's been trying.
We have...
I know you've been trying and things, and I know it's tough because electricians can make much more out there.
Yeah.
But I do have to commend the two electrical teachers that you do have because having a graduate come out of that, he's doing excellent.
Yeah.
Dave, back when there was a shortage of tool and die makers, I mean, that was a big shortage. This way, in some of the other, you know, business owners knew there was a demand, so they had people that were looking to retire, they couldn't let retire because they possessed the necessary skills to keep those businesses alive. So, they got them to work, four days, three days, two days, anything, come in for an hour. But it was really that group that got together that ultimately formed that group with the CTE at the time to come up with a program to generate enroll makers. And so, if there's a demand in those particular areas, is there an opportunity to go back to those businesses, right? I mean, I'm a business owner and I have a particular need and I can't find people. That's going to reflect your life business. Is there an opportunity to get through, you know, I mean, rather than, we don't have a full program, is there an opportunity to start up with a program in both areas or three areas across? So, the business and, also with all the business groups around here, Clark University's here all the time, Chamber of Commerce, you have a number of businesses here that would be more than we're able to help out, to get those programs started and to show the demand and that there is interest, we know there is. To get those, you know, to get the ball rolling. I think, I remember, I remember sort of how those tool and die companies got together and, you know, put together a program here, you know, it's a night program, it's weekends, anything they could to generate that, you know, that's the part. And then, the other thing is, we still own 210 Lancaster Street, which is the old Lancaster Street School. I mean, it's in good shape, but we can't hold on to that much longer before we have to declare that surface and we bought it for the police station, but ultimately ended up choosing a brand new location. So, that's like sits there, it's got an elevator inside, but you know what happens to buildings if we don't use them? And so, we have to at some point decide what is the feasibility or what is the likelihood that somebody can use it for something else? And that might be your opportunity to get the program off the ground. I mean, I know it's not here and it's not a brand new building, but take a tour through the building, I think you've been through it, right?
Yes, I have.
It's really a building and maybe the state can take a walk through and tell you whether or not that's going to use it to the two programs, that may be a thing. And even, you know, just, I mean, it's 40,000 square feet there.
I'm sure they showed it on...
I think, I think the superintendent may have had the pass. We're open to all of those things, but I think you gotta bring, we're not the decision-makers, the state has to look and say, you know what, this is not going to use it to what you're talking, just like you said, and then make your pitch to them.
Yeah.
And then see what, you know, so, see what, but I don't think it costs anything to have them take a look at the building and say, yeah, this is, you know, why don't you pursue the whole early childhood or why don't you use the bottom floor to start your two programs? And I think there's enough of the demand, we've got enough help from the private industry because they need these employees trained, I mean, that's a huge benefit. They can't get people, they can't keep people, they can't train people because they're too busy having those people work two shifts, they can't stop one of them from training. So, you know, I, I don't know that that works, but I think it's worth a little bit of time for you to look into it, I'd be more than willing to help you out on those. But, you know, I hate to see us get rid of the building.
Right.
And then later be looking for a building, you know?
And I think with an early childhood center and then we have early childhood in, you know, CTEI, then you can easily, you know, utilize the students to help augment that program and then you have life, you know, real life skills.
And what are re-wired?
The buildings, they said millions of them. The question though is, is there's different codes for, for education, so, and I know those specific, I can tell you a code in the building, just like you did, but I can't tell you, you have to tell you the energy code, I can tell you everything, but I can't tell you that, you know, the code that they use for education, those are different standards and there's only one way to tell, and that's ask them and maybe take a quick walk through and say, what do you think, is this worth pursuing or not? Because we really don't want to, we don't have any, we don't have, especially for the city for the building, so we have to decide, you know, we can't just encapsulate and let it sit there and turn it all into copper eventually, you know, we have years, many years of sitting there, I mean, we're eating it now, it's just, we don't have a use for it, so we're, we're going to have to decide.
We've already did it a few times. And it's a very neat building.
Is there a drop in data if you don't use it up to a certain time?
No, but I mean, it's, you gotta keep something in the building, you got alarms in the building, you gotta, you know, to keep the building heated and maintained and, you know, if you don't maintain it, the bats get into the attic and you gotta get the bats out, fuck it, the whole, you know, just what happens to the building when nobody's using it? So, we, you know, we've decided, you know, we've reached out, we've had some people inquire about it, but nobody's come to, you know, the table and said, you know, we want to use it, this is not specifically used. So, we've decided to just get it to clean the surface by the council and, you know, put it out there, see if we're interested in it, what they'd like to use it for.
We've had a really exciting conversation about that.
Yeah.
It might be to get it off the ground, get it onto a good space, is that elevator in it? A wide open though, to call the beams, did you throw this away?
I did throw it away.
Yes, they took all, now all the walls gone, all the, all the bearing walls are gone, they put steel beams in the middle, open the door, just square open the space.
But, Dave, would we have to go through the city council to acquire that building? If we wanted to nation early childhood?
Sorry, it's a, it's a city building. I think the most important thing is to determine whether or not it's adaptable to what it is, either early childhood or combination of the two. I don't know that, I've watched the building a million times, I know you can use it for office, you can use it for medical, I, you know, we, I mean, there are a couple of codes that have changed, but nothing significant.
There must be a template out there.
There is.
This code, the other one, that, for the early childhood, you know, what it is, what it is, where to put it and, you know, there's a picture, you know, from the school and then put that one on top of that, see where it fits off.
Right, and Decamo, that has, Capital Assets Management, they have internal engineers that could probably look through the building there. So, there are not free resources to be able to tell you whether or not, but it just might be a volcanic way of starting the program and then getting, I think, the other piece is getting the support from, you know, those local businesses that need, rather than just everything is on you to generate these future employees, get them involved, get them to generate the programs and to make sure we're into what is needed. And, you know, they need to have some skin in the game, right?
Exactly.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else that needs to come forward and give us some... Excellent.
So, I have to say, given the retiring principals, that I'm going to be one of the elders if I'm not already.
Wrong one.
No, 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 we have no clothes.
So, what I did want to say though is that, you know, it's easy as a building principal to focus on one's own school and one's own needs because we face that every day. But Paula really encouraged us to work together. And when I say that we actually went and visited one another's facilities, looked at the, what was, what was great, but what were the needs, considered our own needs together, met a number of times. And that included the elementaries and the early childhood and really discussed together what were our priorities as a team. And so, I just want to say two goes to Paula for really encouraging us to do that and for the rest of the team for really working together and recognizing one another's needs and being able to advocate for one another. So, that was a, I think, a really beneficial process that I would recommend us doing the same going forward. It was really a very different process, felt very different, and I think resulted in a deeper understanding of the challenges that we all face that are similar, but that are also individual challenges. So, I want to thank Paula and the team for doing that.
Great, John. With anybody else wanting to address anything? Any other great thoughts?
I just, can I just touch on one thing?
Sure.
You know, there's not, that's one thing that I think sometimes we might forget and there are different people that have been in this system in different times, so people maybe five years, five decades, whatever it would be. And one thing that I look at as a super major achievement is that there's not one school, and this may not seem like a huge thing, there's not one single school in our system that anybody would not want to send their students to. That's not always been that way. And there were times when that, there were inequities within the system and it took a lot of years and a lot of time and money and resources and commitment from a whole lot of people to make sure that, you know, I remember people saying, I would absolutely not send my kids to that school, I'll sell my house and move if you can't get my kids out of that school. That doesn't happen, I never, never, not once, hear those conversations. For the longest, the public school system, that is huge. Not huge, it's massive and mammoth and beyond one's comprehension when you don't understand, when you know, when you look back 10 or 20 years and think that there were, there were schools where people wouldn't send their students to schools. There's not one school now. There's not, people don't look in a section of the real estate section and say, oh, you know, I'd love to buy that house, but it's not in the right school system or school district. Every school district is the right school district. So, that takes a team effort, a whole lot of people working really hard, but there's not inequities within the system. And it's a fair system and a whole lot of people took a whole lot of time, but that doesn't always happen in urban school systems. Typically doesn't happen where there are always one or two schools that will go out and, you know, just, you know, that's for those people or those kids or the people in that income bracket, doesn't happen anymore. That's huge. That's major significance in having that happen in the city. So, I didn't want to lose touch on that because I used to have verbal arguments with people, almost his side would even vote, the fact that, you know, we had good schools, that all these schools were good and, you know, people will only like not send their kids to certain schools, that doesn't happen anymore.
Yeah, very good point and very true. All right, well, if there's nothing else, we're going to sort of close that portion. I do thank everyone for coming and giving us, listening to us and making sure that we hear what's important to you. So, we'll move on in the agenda. Right now, we're going to move on to, what time is it? 4:44? So, we did have the public school choice hearing, was it postponed for a specific time or was that just...
Seven.
Or seven?
We can go on.
So, while we move to other things and then we'll come back to that, the public hearings. So, do we want to drop down to, do you want to do presentations or do you want to drop down for any...
I'm fine with that.
All right, let's move down to, I have number four presentation and discussion. Dr. Riley? We are very excited about this.
She is, she is, she got mine.
Perfect, thank you very much. That would have been on me too.
Okay, still busy.
So, I'm actually, I'm thrilled to make a presentation at this time and on behalf of the interview committee, much like the superintendent had mentioned about the committee that was put together, the principals, the committee with the school committee members or interview committee with school committee members, with parents, with administrators and also with, with teachers. And for that position, Ms. Woodford was a clear and unanimous choice of the committee to move forward. We considered over a dozen applicants and conducted four formal interviews. Ms. Woodford is currently the Director of Student Support Services at Lowell Community Charter School and she was previously the Assistant Director of Special Education for the Medway Public Schools. The committee was extremely impressed with Ms. Woodford's professional knowledge, varied experience and demonstrated record of improving student outcomes. She articulated a clear vision of how she would approach her new role if given her opportunity to return to Lemnster where she has also served as a teacher and a special education coordinator. In addition, Ms. Woodford's a Lemnster resident and has a clear understanding of the needs of our community and population. It was evident during the interview process that Ms. Woodford possesses strong communication skills and has the ability to both lead and be a member of a team. It was the committee's belief that she would be an asset to the students and all students in the Lemnster Public Schools, but also to our families and the community at large. And we were extremely impressed and would hope that the school committee would consider her candidacy for this position.
All right, having Sue and I served on the committee and everything you said was right on, she did a wonderful job and was heading the shoulders above everyone else. We were very impressed. Does anybody have any specific questions? Do you have a statement?
Yeah, I hear that one.
Oh, perfect. I first want to say welcome home.
Thank you. It's so nice to see so many familiar faces, for sure. First, I do want to thank the superintendent and the hiring committee for moving me forward in this process. It does feel very joyful to be thinking about coming back to Lemnster Public Schools and to be leading special education for the district. When I think about the opportunities that I'm going to have to collaborate with all of the stakeholders, it's very exciting for me. I see myself as a leader in supporting key achievements, not just for students with disabilities, but students without disabilities as well. I think that special ed just can't be the only game in town. What are the other resources that we can have to make sure that we're reaching all students? Making sure we have good differentiated instruction, that we have opportunities to get students the toolboxes that they need and to give them the strategies that they need. All that I really learned about inclusion and good support, I've actually learned here in Lemnster. And I've been able to take that information and use it in other districts that I've worked in. I've learned things there as well, but certainly Lemnster is the one who introduced me to good inclusion services. So, I'm looking forward to, looking back at those programs, seeing what the needs are and being able to make good recommendations. A big part of my practice for the last couple of years has been bringing good professional development and coaching to the schools, looking at curriculum design and also having opportunities to design programs for students. So, I want to think deeply about what are the key skills that I've learned and what of those skills are going to match what Lemnster, what Lemnster needs. I also just wanted to say, I have started thinking about an entry plan, clearly I want to be meeting with the superintendent and making sure that the plans and the thoughts that I have match what she envisioned for the district, but what I've seen in good entry plans is somebody coming in, asking a lot of questions, getting some feedback, taking some good data and then bringing that back to the stakeholders and to the leadership team to start thinking about where do you start, where is the place of start. So, I'm also looking forward to working with the school committee, being able to bring the information that you need to be able to give support to students. I think the questions that the school committee asks are the same questions that parents are asking, what are the programs, are they sustainable, what do we need to be thinking about moving forward? And then, my whole purpose of being here tonight is that I started out as a special ed teacher. I really, really love working with families and making that partnership happen. For the last couple of years, one of the things that I've been able to do in the district I'm in now is do a lot of networking with parents. And parents helping parents is really key. We have a lot of families, I know, in the district that have had, faced some really strong challenges and have had support in the district to get their students the services that they need. And those parents are really going to be the ones who can help the new families that are coming in with students with special needs. So, I'm very excited to have this opportunity.
All right, does anybody have any questions?
So, one of the things I hear a lot is not all funding for special education is up in the hands of the school properties, but it does end up in, with other agencies. And so, can you talk about your experience working, sort of reaching out to the other agencies, try to bring them in as resources to, to help you when you don't always have the resources?
Right, so, it's really looking at the grants that you have too and really using them appropriately, really thinking about, you know, what are the priorities, how are you going to use that grant money? And then, looking out into the community to see what resources are there. I've had some great opportunities to partner with... I've had some great opportunities to partner with out-of-district programs that actually have great skills and knowledge that you can bring back to your district, and actually finding ways to keep students in district by having good training and good resources and good pilot programs. So I think it's really about networking. I'm very knowledgeable about, you know, the transition programs that are out in the community for students with disabilities, and making sure that we're really accessing those and using those and preparing students for the next step.
Good luck.
All right. I just look forward to having Kim back in our district. Why, I'd like to make an option to appoint Kim Woodford. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, you can make that. Oh, I'm sorry. My next special ed and public services director.
We're very excited.
Yes, it is an answer. So we have a first and a second. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Any opposed, motion carries? Welcome.
I just want to make sure, I think one of the, there's another event inside the building, and I see people coming in, and I just want to make sure that if you are here for that Hall of Fame event, that that's not in this room. I don't want anybody, I don't want anybody to miss an event that they thought they were at, not that this isn't interesting, or interactive, but this is a, I just want to make sure nobody's missing that event.
Thank you. Project Apples' presentation?
Three of those, you get to pay off the pay. They have to be in a row.
Oh.
Don't put it on it, Chris.
Hello.
We always love a new one.
I hope it smiles.
I know. I do. I'm really excited to be here tonight and tell you about Project Apples, and I'm really excited to hear early childhood is being discussed here, particularly as well. I do have a PowerPoint presentation here. I have, I don't know if you can see it, but it's here.
I'd love your copies. Oh, thank you.
So this is the name of our program.
I like the visual. Do I have like six copies?
If folks need to, you know, also get up in the room so they can see things, feel free.
So this is the name of our program. The community knows this is Project Apples, but our grant is Leominster CFCE and PCHP, or Coordinated Family and Community Engagement. Just, that's kind of a mouthful, but just to add a little more to this, the Parent-Child Home Visitation Program I'll be talking about has just changed their name to PC Plus. So maybe referring to both. I've been doing Parent-Child Home Program for about fifteen years, so it's kind of hard to change the name to that. So the CFCEs are throughout Massachusetts. Every town and city in Massachusetts has a CFCE, so there are ninety of them that service three hundred and fifty communities. They all have different names and different grant levels. So, what's the hell is that? So we are a free program funded by the Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care. The Leominster Public Schools has supported and sponsored our grant for twenty-two years. We are currently located at Bennett School in Affordable Clastings. The grant priorities are parent education and family engagement, especially to hard-to-reach families, early literacy and child development, collaboration between early childhood education care programs, transgressive support going through school and kindergarten, and linkages to programs, and it's all about relationships. So we might not have all the resources, but we try to point parents in the right direction, and a lot of times they'll contact us, so we can just, do different programs, or how do I start my child in kindergarten? What is the process? How do I get a referral to early intervention? So we provide those important linkages for them. So what we do, we run parent-child playgroups, and I have another slide, I'll be talking with more about playgroups, because that's our largest program. The parent-child home visitation program for under-resourced families, parent education workshops in a variety of topics, a positive solution parenting class, which is a six-week course, growing readers, which is author celebrations, where we celebrate children's book authors, and we have engaging activities to go along with them, baby bookworm and baby sign language. Those are for brand-new parents to help them with communication skills with their young ones. We have daddy and caretaker meet groups we do at the library on Saturday mornings, and that's doing a STEM activity along with a literacy book. We have newsletters and parent education, story walks. We have a permanent story walk up at Shoal and Farms, and a story walk is a story that we've deconstructed and we put along a path, and parents can go and visit the posts that have a story posted and take a walk outside. So we are the first one in Massachusetts to have a permanent story walk. Transition to kindergarten events, which includes our citywide kindergarten celebration we hold in August, bus tours and playdates, and connection to resources, referrals, and linkages. And our early childhood council addresses community needs of young children and families. Our next slide is going over what a calendar would look like that we send out to families. We have three hundred and fifty families on our contact list that we mail this out to that explains all the different programs we offer. They're offered for a variety of ages, starting zero to age five, and we offer them in different locations throughout the community. Next is playgroups, and there is a picture here of one of our playgroups in session. And what playgroups are is a preschool-like experience. And what we do is we set up stations, much like a preschool program, with science explorations, manipulatives, Play-Doh, there's a block area, dramatic play, and parents along with their children visit these different stations. And at the end of an hour of visiting stations, we have a story time and music and movement where the kids all come together and listen to a story. We model dialogic readings during that time. And it's just a good way for families to help their children learn a routine of what it's like when they go to school. So playgroups are multi-age, so that means we have babies up to age five, children who are ready to go to kindergarten, and they're offered at Allen Crest Learning Center and Bennett School. And attending playgroups helps to guide social-emotional development, language, communication, cognitive development, and skills. There is a theme at each of our playgroups, and that theme is set up through our different stations. Our curriculum aligns with the Mass. Early Learning Standards for infants, toddlers, and preschoolers. And lastly, the playgroup facilitator models, reading techniques during shared book reading uses the Scholastic My Big World magazine, and this is a take-home tool for parents so they have some communication and language that they can read when they need. Our next program, we just started this year, this is also a playgroup, but it had a new twist on it. We had a parent workshop series integrated right into the playgroup. So while the kids were doing stations, the parents met with a workshop leader who coached them in child development, handling conflict, social-emotional development, using positive language, and parenting concerns. So we had six weeks of the parent presentation who did this alongside playgroups. Our partners who provide literacy and school readiness is the Leominster Library. They're our biggest partner. And together, we run our family fun nights, growing readers, baby bookworm, daddy and caretaker and meet group, and citywide kindergarten celebration. And then another great partner for us is the Leominster Community Coalition, and this is a volunteer group of ladies who get together and they're trying to promote literacy in our community. So they go around and they do a story mobile, they go into playgrounds in the summertime and read to kids. They kind of will just gather the kids around, okay, we're going to read a story here, think about books to the children. They're also working in subsidized housing units, giving books out, and what we recently just tried is bingo for books. We play bingo, and surprise, and they get books. So that's a way of getting books in different hands of children. Other partners are Shoal and Farms, the Leominster Rec. Department, Allen Crest Learning Center, the Mall at Whitney Field, Leominster Public School Title I, Riverside Village, the City of Leominster, and Monty Rock Rotary. Our biggest partner, Leominster Public Schools, who's been our lead agent for over twenty-two years, and they collaborate with us with many of our activities, such as the Gemma Rama, which we hold at Priest Street School, citywide kindergarten celebration, transition programs, and referrals. They also help us with grant assistance and financial management of our grants, and we are supported by the administration and Bennett School teachers, specialists, custodians, and Janice, the school secretary. And we also receive support with technology, personnel, payroll, and education. So we're appreciative of Leominster Public Schools for all they do for us. And a special shout-out to Superintendent Paula Deacon, and Alisa Pola, Jim Riley, and Ann-Margaret Tessie, who have been extremely supportive of our program in early childhood in our community. So another great program besides our CFCE is the Parent-Child Home Program. We have had this in Leominster for seventeen years, and this is a home visitation program for children who are under-resourced. Children ages two to five can be enrolled in the Parent-Child Home Program. And what we do is we visit them twice a week and bring in early literacy and school readiness activities. There are books that are given to these children that they get to teach, and a homeless model ways that they can be using these books and bringing out readiness activities. And then lastly, you have the Family Child Care Model. This is another grant we have to work with family childcare providers in our community. And every year, we're able to pick six providers that we work with using the Parent-Child Home Program model, and a homeless goes in and works with a family childcare provider reviewing school readiness activities. So I live in the same community where I work, and I'm able to see families who have completed the Parent-Child Home Program, and they're always very appreciative, and they're proud to tell me how well that they've done. And I was proud to learn that last year, a salvatorian at Leominster High School was one of our former Parent-Child Home Programs. This is just some validated research about the Parent-Child Home Program that's done by our Massachusetts PCHP. We follow a model in New York, so there is some research. We don't currently have any in Leominster, it's been on my radar for a while, but this is just some research regarding the families. This program is in only thirty-five communities in Massachusetts, so we are one of thirty-five that we see in Parent-Child Home Programs. We have the Brain Building and Progress embedded into our program. We started out in two thousand and twelve, and science tells us that a child's brain develops the fastest, the first five years of life, and it significantly influences his or her ability to learn over a lifetime. These early experiences show us how the brain is built during this time. So what's really important is serve and return, the back-and-forth connections, and this is something we incorporate into all of our programs. Next is our Ages and Stages questionnaire. Parents, a lot of times have questions, is my child developing like everyone else? They don't seem to be talking like other kids. So we have this questionnaire in place called Ages and Stages, and it's for children two months to sixty months. And it tells parents how their child is doing in the areas of speech and language, physical development, performance of daily activities, independence, expressing feelings, and interacting with others. After the parent completes the questionnaire, we score it, and then we review the results with them. We have early learning guideline sheets that we give to them. If we find maybe they're not on target or a little below, we do one of two things. We'll either rescreen in two months, or we'll make a referral to early intervention or the special ed department at Leominster Public Schools. So this is a great tool for parents to understand how their child is developing and growing. We also have an Early Childhood Council, and this is for vested members of our community who want to talk about the needs of young families in our community. We meet four times a year, and the mission of our Early Childhood Council is to provide all children with an opportunity to participate in enrich learning opportunities by the time they reach kindergarten. And we have some very dedicated members, including Ann-Margaret Tessie Mitchell, and Andy Tenio, WIC, Childcare Resources, United Methodist Church, Pickle Mondo Early Learning Center, Kings Corner, former city councilor Jim Lantziani, and Karen Rapp. So there's a couple of these folks who've been with us over twenty years, that'd be Jim Lantziani and Marie Cuco from Pickle Mondo. So next is our grant funding. Our grant for CFCE and PCHP is a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, and it breaks down to about seventy thousand for our CFCE program and fifty-three thousand for Parent-Child Home Program. And I'm the only full-time person on staff. We have two early learning literacy specialists and three part-time Parent-Child Home Program early learning specialists. And then we also receive fifty thousand dollars for our Family Child Care Model, and that employs a part-time coordinator and two early learning specialists. Additionally, we receive a grant called the Peter Memorial Fund, and this allows us to work with displaced families. So we do a story time over at Orchard Street and MIHN Homeless Shelter with this grant. And then we received about twenty-nine thousand dollars of in-kind donation from Leominster Public Schools. A couple of our challenges, we're grant-funded, there will be a new commissioner at the Department of Early Education and Care. Commissioner Weber is going to be leaving, so we don't know who a new person is going to be. We're hoping they'll be supportive of our CFCE program. Also, team members are limited to part-time hours, and we have a waitlist for a lot of our programs. Our growing readers program, baby bookworm, and playgroups all fill up, so it's really challenging when we're having a family coming to us. We try to weave them in somewhere into one program so we can try to get them into our Up here, this is just a quick snapshot of the work we do at MIHN Homeless Shelter, and this is the story time and STEM activities we do with the children with the parents One of the greatest values of our program is it provides parents and their children who may not have access to preschool programs to participate in literacy-based activities, socialization, and parent activities. These are our deliverables from last year. We provided a hundred and sixty-two referrals to programs, ten workshops to families, the number of families who attended our playgroups was eight hundred and ninety-seven, twenty-one families in our Parent-Child Home Program. We've had attendance at all of our literacy programs at one thousand seven hundred and sixty-six, transition to kindergarten events were six, and AS2 screenings we had thirty-eight. You've probably heard the real estate phrase, location, location, location. Our phrase is relationship, relationship, relationship. Thank you to our schools, families, community partners for the outstanding support of early childhood education.
Thank you very much. So if somebody is interested in participating, how would they feel about contacting and getting involved?
Okay, so just a couple different ways. They can contact us at Bennett School. We do have a separate phone number, just because we knew we wanted to carry that phone number with us. So they can contact us at nine seven eight.
So if somebody is interested in participating, how would they feel about contacting and getting involved?
Okay, so just a couple of different ways. They can contact us at Bennet School. We do have a separate phone number, just because we wanted to carry that phone number with us. So they can contact us at (978) 534-3038. Our most-used form of getting through us is Facebook. Most families are on Facebook, so we are on Project Apple in Facebook.
That is a wonderful resource. We're very lucky of the community to have you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I first met her when we were doing the homeless Tuesday nights. And I was impressed because it was, it was steady chaos at times. I can't say enough about her. She is what she is. She does it.
Thank you. Yes, yeah. Thank you. We have a wonderful team at Project Apple, too, that helps with all this.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
I'm here for Lemmonstor Community Coalition, doing some reading at the playgrounds. It's love, pass out books. One question I have for you. How do you, how do you find families with preschool-age students that haven't come into, haven't come into preschool, to be able to get them into a program such as the one that they go to the houses and brings a toy in?
Yes.
How to find that out?
So that's a great question. We do a variety of outreach. We do a lot of the events the city does, and we try to meet families at these locations. And I always try to get their email address, so I can add them to our constant contact list. We also, like Early Intervention refers families to us. And the library is huge, National Library. Our Baby Bookworm Program we have there fills up right away with 12 families, with as much as 12 we're able to service. But we get their emails right away, and we add them to our constant contact list.
So important, so important that young students be exposed to reading and...
Absolutely. When I first started this job, I thought it was age three, and the more I'm doing this, it has subsided for us.
I think we've gone on some workshops, and basically by age three, you're already behind if you don't have that foundation. And that carries over to their learning, and it takes a long time to sort of catch up and make up that ground. So it's really important to do it right from the start.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hey, I think now we're all set for our public hearing. And our first public hearing is going to be on the school choice. We appreciate you being here.
That'll leave you to chemistry tonight.
So whatever she says, it is.
Public hearing, right there?
Yes.
All right, Angela Disser. Hi.
I'm here.
Jen Lantziani here. So we put in the packet the school choice guidelines for you to review. The numbers are similar from years past. There are not many changes. It's really based upon state's availability at this point if you approve the guidelines. Do you have any questions at all?
The only one thing that I hear, and it happens usually at this time of year, and I know everybody does their due diligence to sort of qualify the, you know, sort of people's applications, is somebody moved in with a grandparent. Somebody sold their house and moved in with their parents. And then obviously the recording is, oh, do you have a electric bill? We have some mail. Well, we just sold our house, and we just want to deal with them, and we don't have any bills under, we don't have any bills under our name. And so that's the sort of thing that we get at City Hall is, we have to go in and apply or try to make our case that our students are still in our Lemmonstor Public School system, or we moved here, or we don't have any validating information. So all of those, there's other things that you can get besides that.
Yeah, so this year, we changed it up a little bit. We require three different forms of proof of residency and proof of occupancy. So that happens often. What you're talking about is families moving in with somebody else that they don't have bills under their name. We call that doubling up, if you will. And so we ask folks to have a residency affidavit completed and notarized, along with proof of residency, which can include a tax bill, it can include a mortgage, most recent mortgage or lease, proof of occupancy. So another column we're looking for is any kind of utility bill, and then proof of identification. So we're trying to hit all of the spots, and it, folks have been able to do so with the residency affidavit.
Some people are apprehensive, and they thought you had to have some mail, etc. One of the other ways, you can register the voter, you can change your license, stay in with your ass, there are a whole bunch of things that you can do. Hopefully, the word is out there that there are other things besides those pieces of documentation.
I would like to hope so, but, yeah.
Other than that, I'm all for it. You did a good job explaining it.
Just for the record, the guidelines you put in front of us are the same as last year, correct?
Yes. There are a few tweaks, but nothing to the number of students per class, per grade. Those have stayed the same for a number of years.
We asked last year what the amount was of students that we couldn't take in because we had to close it off, and we were told we had to wait a little while for that. Do you have those numbers now? Or are you going to estimate as how many students we couldn't accept into the system? Even just an approximate, doesn't have to be the exact number.
If you don't mind, we'll bring that to Paula, she can put it in the packet. Then we do track all of our applications and whether they're approved or denied.
I'm just curious.
And we haven't really tallied them. We haven't at this point because we're waiting for approval, and so we have some...
Don't like misalign your day, or if you come across the information, that's fine.
Right, and it'll be different from grade to grade.
Yeah, right.
Does anybody have some questions? If anyone would motion?
Motion to approve the recommended policy on the school choice.
Second, all the comments. Okay, all the despair. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much both of you for coming forward. And Lemmonstor has approved the school choice once again. We're going to move forward with the public hearing on the budget. Superintendent, what are we going to be seeing? Melanie, can I ask you a question from board of legislators and base?
So once again, I might be a little excited about this image, but I don't know why. Because when you revamp these numbers over and over and over again, you just want to get it all there, and we just want to get to work. So I want to thank you on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Dr. Riley and myself for allowing us to come forward in public with our budget. And when you hear the word "budget," this is usually the very first image that you think of.
You don't need to look.
Yes. And even if you're not hugely involved in education, this whole Chapter 70 controversy really is the foundational discussion that we've been having. And it's not over. And I want people to understand that there is still a fight going on, especially for urban districts and a city like Lemmonstor. We will do better. We will have better. Unfortunately, at this time, funding is still dictating education, and our goal is to reverse that. If you look at this image, very teeny tiny print, anywhere, do you see the word "student" or "child" or "teacher" or "professional" in there? It's really dollars, dollars, dollars. So it's somewhat disturbing, but we know that it is a baseline, and it is a reality. So why we do this, you know, in education, we love objectives. We make teachers write objectives, rewrite objectives. So this is really the, why do we do this? Why do we go through the process that we do and all the iterations that we do? And number one, we want to promote and support academic excellence. Again, adequate is not the bar in Lemmonstor. It's the floor. We need to exceed adequate. Adequate and average no longer means enough. We want to ensure safe environments in all schools. We have invested quite a bit with locking devices, replacements of doors. We have the films on many fronts of our buildings for deterrence. We've been working closely with the police department around our Alice drills. No longer do we have the panic about, oh, we're going to have an Alice drill tomorrow? They become like our fire drills now. And we're even talking about having to ramp up our Alice drills a little bit further. We've anticipated the comprehensive needs of our students. We have reviewed, and we have to continue to review. Education is really a moving target all the time. We look at our out-of-district placements, the expenses, the transportation, and we stay on top of that. I'm very excited to see, a lot of pressure for Kim Woodford to say, okay, what's your vision? So because special education is a top priority, it's a huge expense, so we have to make sure that we're making good choices all the time. We provide a socio, social, emotional support for all of our students. We began an ESL initiative this year that really took off, but we need to enhance it, continue to grow. SEL is never a one-and-done. This is in our curricular strategies, our teaching strategies, our home strategies, making sure that social-emotional peace is always addressed and that we do look at our whole child. And we want to hold tightly to our core values, our goals, and really foster the relationships in this city. So our budgetary process this year, as I said earlier, we started back in December. Before anybody went off on winter break, we needed to have lists. Give me a priority list, give me if the world was right as rain list. And we started there. We started with the building basis, coming material-wise, structures that you need, people that you need. We looked at the program from a district point of view. What do we see systematically happening in our needs? Our facilities director, what are you seeing about our buildings? Denote everything, accumulate the information. Our business office, and we were working with the city finance as well, where are we at currently and where do we want to go? And Dr. Curran had mentioned, one of our strongest pieces of work to date has been around our task forces, looking at each other's buildings and programs and structures and materials, and really having those collegiate conversations. And we've just had our third community forum around strategic planning, because that's where our budget should be based, on the goals of the whole community. So step two, we brought, there's so much information out there. We bring it to our cabinet level. We look at curriculum. Like I said, we've been working with Commissioner Riley very closely. We attend every urban meeting that there is. We talk with HR, I would say hourly, pupil services business. This is a very cohesive, seamless group. And once we get to a point that we're feeling comfortable, we come forward to the school committee, session of finance committees, which I have to say, have pushed, pushed, pushed. We've done our research, we've gone deeper and deeper every single meeting, but it actually sort of unclogged the wheels and got us moving forward. So it's been great work from our finance meetings. And so here we are this evening at the public hearing, and putting it out to be transparent. There have been some budgetary factors. The great debate I call Chapter 70 this year, the state aid and local revenue. Stay tuned, because I believe that that fight will start to gear up a little bit. We are watching the out-of-district and special education cost. Technology has been a plus for us this year. We have built up quite an inventory. So one of the things is, once you have an inventory, you have an infrastructure. So they have to complement each other, so pieces don't sit in boxes. But I can say thank you to our technology team and our buildings. Every child has been able to take online assessments, state assessments mandated, grades three through 10 this year. No borrowing, no bringing trucks over. We have made quite a headway. Health insurance, the United States law. It's something that everybody struggles with, but it's a very real struggle in school budgets. It's such an expense, but it's a necessary one. We want to make sure that we also in this budget, respect all contractual agreements and obligations. We pay attention to revolving accounts, our circuit breaker, school choice, special donations. Thankfully, this year, we received impact aid, both state and federal, to help the students that came into our district and stayed in our district. So that really was able to get us over the edge. And our last piece, I think our biggest piece moving into FY20 is really the conditions of our buildings. Safety is not just about locking a door. First of all, you want to be able to have a door that locks. And so the city side has worked with us, writing grants for us to give us some new doors and cameras. Really excited about some cam buttons, but that's coming up. Essential right now, phone systems. So you can't call for help if your phone doesn't work. So we're working with the city on that right now.
The walkie-talkies.
The walkie-talkies, yes. We have a ton. So the effects of this are FY20, we have been able to put equitable staffing and programming in all of the schools. There should not be a child in the city of Lemmonstor that says, oh, I got to opt out of that program just to be a part of that cohort. We have moved and utilized every resource and staffing need to better address students. We are asking in this budget to move, to bring on 13 positions. Three of them are Unit A. These are student supports, SACT. These are the guidance counselors, what we call SACTs. I actually was going to do an acronym bingo, because education has so many acronyms, and we need change. A SAC is a School Adjustment Counselor. These are the needs that students have. We also need six more tutors and four paraprofessionals. Often, we bring in these positions, which are essential either to a specific child or a specific program. And we pay for them out of our grant monies, which isn't a good use of our grants. And our grants go up and down. These positions are essential, with a cost factor for FY20 of $360,000 totally for all 13 members. We are able to maintain class sizes, and there will be no adjustment to any current student fee structure. So it's a very stable, stable budget going forward. So our proposal, the numbers are in front of you. The two numbers that we truly need approval are the wages and salaries of $49,930,883.24. We always get the change in there.
I wonder why we have 23 cents in.
Last year was two cents.
Two cents, four cents.
Munis role, like makes everything nice round numbers, but I really do need the 24 cents. Yes.
There is.
Yes. Grab that. Grab that. And then our direct expenses are $24,811,573.24. I have to say, our expense line and our wages are conservative, and we have cut it down to the point that if we don't get a dollar in one of those two lines, it's going to cost us. We have really made sure to check these numbers over and over again. So we also have our application of a supplementary revenue of $2,543,981.24. I'll throw in the 54 cents. So net school spending requirement is $76,380,501. And the indirect expenses that you listed here, the indirect expense for this year Once again, I get the 15.
I get the dollars.
Yes. We already have the 40 cents. Yeah. So we have some celebrations, things that don't cost our district and our city and our members anything, but there's such celebrations. And people mentioned them earlier, and I just wanted to jump on it. We received a 10-year grant for middle school health to come back. That is tremendous. I want to thank the writing team on that grant. It is a much-needed position, and with what is going on in the world, this is a, this is just a young player, so this is a huge celebration. Melanie, you also mentioned the dean at CTEI. We're not asking for funding. Chapter 74 will pay the salary for that. Chapter 74 will pay the salary for that position. So, we will have our second dean up at the high school. Our technology team, through a partnership, a digital partnership, is receiving a grant for $217,000. We will kick off a one-to-one initiative. And we have a three-year rollout plan. And every student eight through 12, within three years, we will be on a one-to-one with professional development. We don't want to just hand computers and someone say, oh, please go look on Google, hubby knows that. Our teachers, we're going to roll this out appropriately. So, thank you to our technology team. ELL is in every school this year with no cost. We are sharing staff, we have diversified, we know where everybody is going. We reallocated 12 physicians at no cost to the district. We are also able to take a staff member and create part of her workload as a transitional liaison. We have students who leave our district and our schools and come back for various reasons. Could be health, it could be educational, for whatever reason. And when students transition back in, it's very difficult when they just show up at a school and everyone says, what are you doing here? We need a liaison, someone to help both sides hold this together that students can be more successful when they transition back, and it is seamless. Once again, Wendy in the city's office has applied for a grant and we're praying for this one. Handic buttons in every school office, new doors at Fallbrook and Northwest, essential, essential. Additional cameras. So, we're waiting to hear for this.
Any day now.
That's a song.
It sounds like I am so excited about a hand button. I'm a little nervous about a lot of control, but it's fine. And then the last one really speaks to the work that we talked about for our schools. Through the Department of Education, our curriculum team just insured a $53,000 grant to do a curriculum and PD audit of Lomond Street Public Schools. We're going to see how impactful our materials are, our practices are, and what the implication for student success is moving on. So, we were very excited to share that all of this is, and there's more. These are also embedded in moving forward for FY '20. So, lo and behold, this is the true picture that I want everybody to be left with. I know we started with the dollar sign, but we're here about students and we're here about success. And if we do our job right, education will start dictating funding. And we're going to need everyone in this community to support us. So, with that, I do submit the FY '20 budget for approval.
Can I just make one comment?
Sure.
So, as you know, we paid off the pension system 100%. And so, the teachers have their own retirement system. And then for the non-teachers or non-union employees, we allocate the required pension amount from the city's contribution or the school department's contribution, then that's going to be a chargeback. So, in addition to the regular budget this year, there'll be, the regular amount appropriated for the pension system plan will be appropriated. And then I think the normal cost will be 30%. And we're not sure because of the investment rate or whatever that might be. But minus that, that is money that the school system is going to have to spend over and above. So, that could be 1.3, that could be 1.6 million in addition to. Now, the way we've treated that in the first year, because we don't know what the return on our investment is going to be, that could be up or down, is we treat it as a one-time appropriations. So, whereas I think the superintendent was saying, we're buying all of this technology. We need to get a maintenance plan in place. And we had talked to Steve Marmoli about that in the past. Even at City Hall, we realized like, we buy a server and then five years are up. And we're like, didn't we just buy that? And servers are very expensive. And so, you lose track of some of that. And I think that's what Steve is trying to do in the administration is, as we buy this, make sure that we have a replacement plan in place. And so, there are also some repairs to the buildings that the superintendent has talked about. That also is part of that whole process. So, during the course of the year, we will be appropriating funds from that pension program for use in our schools. So, that's in addition to, and that doesn't show up in the budget, but that's in addition to. And then I think once we're comfortable on our return on investment and we know that that money, you'll be minus the 30% of current cost, then I think that, at that point, you know, at some point, that becomes regular part of the budget. So, that's another, over a million, could be million three, could be million six, up either down in a way. That eventually is going to be part of the regular fixed cost. But I think at this point, it's safe to say the biggest needs are in those one-time things that we can use to kind of catch up. Some of the complaints the teachers get is we don't have enough supplies. You know, those are some of the areas that superintendent is going to be able to go back with the finance committee and make recommendations to transfer that off. And I think that's something we'll begin to work on pretty quick as the budget is passed. So, that is in addition to. So, that's also something that's a very positive thing. And superintendent, you said you were excited. This is very exciting as I travel the state, there are signs everywhere for overrides and debt exclusions just to get them to fund the budget at current cost. That's where they'll increase in the budget by dime. That's just to do what they did last year. And superintendent or administration's done a good job. There's a difference between managing and then sort of leadership. And this administration for the superintendent has been about leadership, keep her eye on the budget. And she's certainly shown us on the city side that she can take money and it's not how much money you get, it's how you use it. And just to use the words redistribution and focusing on principals looking at other schools has certainly shown leadership over management. And that's how we see that City Hall. And I know it hasn't been easy, but I know she's been absolute stick-to-it-ness on budget and making sure. She didn't understand it, she did understand that the finance committee has really been helpful. I know, so my hat's off. And I certainly would like to make a recommendation to approve the fiscal year 20, I can't believe it, 2020 budget.
Excellent. Excellent. Any comments? I would just have one, but go ahead.
I'd just say, the sheet I handed out has nothing new on it. The summary page that's in the packet left the amount for the city appropriation as a path problem. So, all this really does is add.
And we'd have to change this anyway later and.
But I just wanted, you know, it was, you had to sort of figure out what we were asking for from the city in the original summary page. So, this just makes that line.
My comment would be typically we improved also on the non-net school spending, which is the crossing guards and transportation. So, I'm presuming we would have another motion after that, after this to include that in our budget. I just want to make sure that we include that and do that as well. So, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other comments or discussions? If not, all those in favor, opposed, everyone is in favor, motion carries. I think this has been one of the smoother budget sessions that we've had in many, many years. So, I appreciate everybody's hard work. I know the finance department here of two has worked extremely, extremely hard. So, thank you very much for all your time and energy. And they worked very collaboratively with the school committee, finance committee in particular, and obviously all the building managers. So, we can, thank you. Do you want to take a subsequent motion on the non-net school spending, I guess?
Just trying to find the right page.
So, the transportation.
Crossing guards and transportation. This should be in our budget monthly. I don't know whether you folks have it off here or something easy to reach. There it is.
There it is. So, it's in.
In here?
Oh, okay.
It's on the back of the one, two, three, fourth page. I just counted up. So, Glenn, I'm missing this. I'm seeing the transportation on this document, but I'm not seeing the crossing guards. Oh, is that the other?
Oh, where's the crossing guard?
We have another. Mike, we have another.
Because we shouldn't, we definitely want to be about the crossing guard.
No, but we do need to, but we did also need to make sure they made proof of those items.
Is there another, is there another place where we have them?
Yes, if you, if you go, and I wish, we should have numbered these, we'll number these back down.
Right.
One, just flip two pages and you're looking at the preliminary fiscal 20 net school spending salary budget, but at the very bottom.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five is the.
Crossing guards.
The suggested preliminary is the $21,724 and 43 cents.
We should not fully stand because we don't have a full complement of crossing guards.
Well, just in case we do.
Right, we want to stand there.
So, Michael, do you have the two things related to the motion?
All right, so in fact, so the crossing guards are actually in the first numbers we had.
Yes, but I don't buy the non-net school spending.
Okay. So, the crossing guard numbers are in the first set of numbers. The transportation numbers are on the page that I pointed to, back at page four. So, our anticipated expenses for fiscal 20 are $5,406,350.
For transportation.
For transportation. So, I make a motion.
And I think we still have to make a motion for the crossing guards because I don't, we didn't delineate that there was non-net school spending in what we voted on in the numbers, the raw numbers.
So, yes, so as a, we would take the $5,406,350 and we would add the $35,000.
Twenty-one thousand, seven hundred, twenty-four and forty-three cents.
What she said, twenty-one thousand.
I gave you a dollar.
Seven twenty-four and forty-three.
So, we have a motion for the crossing guard salary and a motion for transportation. Both are non-net school spending items. I have a motion in a second. Does anybody have any other comments or questions, Sue?
I think we talked about moving the crossing guard expenditure by the $500. Should go under non-net school spending as well.
That amount was initially just in case they needed supplies, right? If they needed jacket, if they needed sign.
Yes, I can see the correct, that is all.
It should be moved to non-net.
So, I motion to amend it for the $500.
So, approved.
Any other comments, Glenn?
Just a clarification that we're not asking the full $5,406,350 in transportation. $975,000 of that will come from two other sources. So, the net rest of the city is yet provided.
Right, I think we're approving the budget and where we get the money is another.
Another matter.
Another matter, yeah. Just like we're approving, you know, salaries and some may be grants or whatever.
Right.
All right, so all those in favor?
Right.
Anybody opposed, the motion carries, everyone's in favor? Thank you very much, everyone. That's wonderful work. So, we'll move on right now to the human resource report. We just wanted to update where we're at. You'll see it's very slim, yes, because we are coming down to the end this year. The HR office just gets very close to that, very important.
Just as a reminder, we do post all open positions online. Okay, I just keep telling people, go to the website. Call, if there are any openings, go to the website. I didn't hear.
Yeah, just keep changing. All right, excellent, thank you very much. We have approval of the minutes.
I would like to make the motion to approve the minutes of April 1st, 2019.
I'll second. All right, do we have any omissions, errors, corrections? Sue?
Since I was absent and I probably was.
Sue, 99% of it.
But I was here for a while. No, seriously, you should just put that I arrived.
At whatever time.
I arrived at like, you don't lie. We adjourned at what?
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor, opposed, motion carries. We're going to move on to finance subcommittee report. I think we're going to table the warrants.
If you're choosing something, then approval warrants, we're going to table that because that finance agency has approved them. Second is, it's not really a transfer, it's a school choice spending request. It's on the third page from the back of our packet. So, the request from the school department is to spend up to $2,014,155 of school choice on fourth quarter health insurance expenses. We won't know the exact number until the bill comes in, but we believe it will be no worse than that. I think that we want to, the intent is to approve a number that will allow the bill to be paid. If it's lower than this, then we'll be, someone will have school choice.
And you're making a motion.
So, I make a motion that we approve this use of school choice.
Up to?
Up to $2,014,155 to pay for health insurance expenses.
Second, okay. Motion a second, any other comments? All those in favor, opposed, everyone voted in the affirmative, motion carries.
Can I just ask, and I know the answer to this, but we're creating new positions in the health insurance you've budgeted and anticipated that in the cost of the state tax insurance.
Yes. Great, good point. All right, we're going to move on to the action items, which we, of course, I think have already done all of them. So, we're all set there. We're going to move on to newer old business. I do have something, and I know you're going to do, you'll do your thing. So, we do need to do the superintendent's end of the year evaluation. So, we would appreciate sort of synopsis of the things that you have accomplished on your goals. I know Sue and I are part of the evaluation committee. And Isabel, are you both still interested in doing so?
Certainly.
Okay. So, once we have sort of synopsis of your year, then we will meet and delineate, we'll probably use a similar format that we've used previously, but we'll send that out to everybody and ask people to get it back to us. And then we'll tabulate it and then present it before the end of the school year. Your contract. Does anybody else have any newer old business, and no, you do?
Well, just one thing that before we do that.
Okay.
I'd like to mention that the National Honor Society induction ceremony is this Thursday at 7:00 PM in the high school auditorium. I know that conflicts with what the special ed program down at Francis Drake. So, I don't know how people want to divide up their time to go to one or go to the other.
I think. And we also had the CTEI dinner in May 15. It is coming up.
That's coming up. All of us should have gotten an invitation to both things and be able to respond to that. And other than that, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executives.
Are we going to do Chris's during my group session?
Oh, yeah, okay.
That's what we need to do, but I thought that's it. Then we'll move into executive session. We have one, housekeeping business. Is anyone in it, she retired?
Now, we'd just like to acknowledge Chris Silverman. It was administrative assistant day probably weeks ago. But we'll pass away to our next meeting, which is tonight. So, we'd like to present this to Chris and for her thanks and always being available to help us.
Your wonderful phone call, whatever we need.
Thank you.
If anyone says, ask Chris, she'll know.
You're invaluable.
You know what this is? I don't know, ask Chris.
You're invaluable, Chris. Thank you so much for everything.
No, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session following Massachusetts General laws, chapter 39. And we will be returning and we need a.
Voice vote?
Voice vote, yes.
So you made, you made a motion and who opposed? Voice vote, Ron?
Yay.
Yay.
Yay. And so we ask everyone to please leave. We will be returning back, but we'll be back.
I'm sorry, and I know this is not even regular, but we were told that the school committee, so that 7 o'clock back in February, to show up for 7 o'clock, which we did. We had a two-minute presentation for the meeting, for the open mic session. But we were told to be here for 7, not 6. Would you kindly hear us for two minutes?
It is something that we don't typically do. What? So is it, has it, does that anything to do with our agenda? Or I'm presuming it has something to do with what we're going into executive session about, but. What is the role of the, what is the role of the committee?
You're here now, right? And the meeting hasn't closed, so I would, I mean, you really can do it in two or three minutes?
Yeah, we would, we would not want everybody to speak. So if you could have somebody be a spokesperson. All right, so we're going to suspend our typical protocols. We allow you to speak. We would not be entering into a dialogue, however, so you understand. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
We greatly appreciate your time.
No, no, no problem. I think so a lot of people confuse, not a problem.
Good evening. My name is Denise Welsh. I live at 29 Dillon Street in Lemmister, Mass. And as president of, vice president of the paraprofessional union, I am speaking on behalf of all paraeducators currently working in the Lemmister Public Schools. We come before you tonight in the hope of a fair and reasonable contract this year as we approach the start of another negotiations with administration. From our past contract negotiations, administration is well aware that their paraeducators are one of the lowest-paid para units in the state of Massachusetts. We are professionals. We have degrees. We are entrusted to work directly with students, actively supporting their success. We're required to know and meet every student's needs in all subjects. When we, we hear that we are invaluable in the classroom by many teachers and administration. But yet, when it comes to wages, we continue to be overlooked despite the fact that our wages make up typically about only 4% of the total budget. Our starting wage is $12.73. Minimum wage is $12. That is only 73 cents more than what our eighth graders, who we work with on a daily basis, students that are 14 years old, can make working and part-time at Market Basket. And to that point, in January, the minimum wage is going up to $12.75. So thus, our students would be making more than us. In short, in a few short years, 2023, the minimum wage will be $15. Also, at our, since our last negotiation, we have seen several new administrative positions created at a much higher rate to the district. We just wanted you to be aware of these facts. At this point, we've reached out to the administration three times and our MTA rep has also reached out for a date and time to start negotiations. And we have failed to hear back. It's well past time to start. We want to start negotiations in a positive and professional manner because we are professionals. We hope that the Lemmister administration will do the same. We love working and making a difference in our students' academic lives. We love what we do and we show that. Well, once more, thank you for your time. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So at this time, we have voted to go into executive session. We need everyone to vacate from this area and we will be returning. So, hey, we are back in regular session. And would someone like to make a motion based on our salary changes that we're looking at?
Can you bring up the number specifics part of that?
I think we can talk about, if you want, the percentage for which group of folks that we're talking about.
All right, so I make a motion that we approve the 1% raises to individual contracts.
To detail, to be provided a subsequent date.
To be provided a subsequent, subsequent date by the superintendent.
And then.
Do you want to make the same, part of the same motion or separate motion?
And then we would need to make another motion for approximately $8,000 to $9,000 to cover any additional performance raises for that group of folks.
Conturded by the superintendent.
Yes.
So if that's a separate motion, you could vote the first one.
And we could do it in blocks, so.
All right. So I also move that we approve 8,000 to 9,000 for additional raises.
For performance?
For performance, for individual contracts.
Individual contracts.
To be terminated. All right, do, second, all those in favor? Opposed? Everyone voted for it, so motion carries? Do I have a motion? Yep, second. All those in favor, please go forth and have a nice day. Thank you, everybody. Great work. Appreciate it. So thank you. So our next meeting is in two weeks. So 20th, 21st. Do we have a meeting on June 17?
What?
Do we have a meeting on June 17?
That's a new meeting.
It's getting grouping as we. So we do that, but I was just wanting to make sure because. I think at June 3. We have June 3 and then I can.